But you know, like everything is clogged and all had to just go like this. Had to go like that. Yeah, they'd just leave them out there. Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:28 and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Hey, I'm gonna. The purchase comes in here late. I'm fining her on the mic. She doesn't have to be late.
Pull that ordinance out.
Hey, Roy, I'll make that.
Yes. Yeah. What's the council told? Oh, you're lucky. I was gonna try something tonight. I was gonna say you are fine.
We got a full squad.
Yeah, let's go. See, Luke. I was gonna find you 24 hours from being there. And if it continues, it keeps growing. Find it to friends, friends of Roy Wims, friends of Roy Wims. Make your check out. Make them judge. You say, what? Get your book out.
Like, what is he talking about? We're just being fined.
Oh, well, we better find him. Contempt. I'm like, what? I'm not shutting my mouth.
Don't be trying to pop something.
One more second.
All ready to start. Nothing I say, nothing.
Time. Having appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the committee to hold to order. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nutriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I would accept the motion for the approval of the June 27, 2025 committee meeting. It's been first and second on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Are there any presentations?
No.
No presentations. Next, we have the ordinances tabled are remaining in committee. Any action?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would ask to amend motion, uh, 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 resolution 2025-191, changing the date of this event from May 23, 2025 to July 2, 2025.
Second.
You gotta pull it off the floor, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, you gotta bring it out first.
Motion to, uh, bring it out first.
Second.
Hey, you got it.
It's done, right?
I'll make your motion to a man.
So it's been motion and second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now we can deal with the change of the date.
Motion to amend.
Second. It's been properly moved and second to amend, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And at this time, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that it be put on the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. It's been properly moved and second for consent agenda. Any, any discussion?
You gotta vote on the amendment.
We already did.
We did.
Okay.
All in favor for putting on the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Let's see here. Let's see, Mr. Clerk.
Ordinance for commit, for committed consideration, CWLP, 2025-237, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UEW, UE260408, VM cloud backup subscription for three years with SHI International Corp. In amount not to exceed $242,052.06 for the Office of Public Utilities.
More. Motion to, yeah, motion withdraw. I can make a motion to withdraw this amendment. This ordinance.
It's been motion to withdraw. Is there a second?
I never heard that one do.
Backup subscription?
Doug come up and speak or?
Um, so I can, I can explain that, um.
Well, let's, let's get a second and then have discussion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Now, session.
The low bidder has, has withdrawn their bid on this and so, uh, this order, so with that, we're gonna ask that this be withdrawn. We've prepared on first read to go with the bidder prepared, uh, that we're prepared to award this to.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Oh, it's been properly moved and second to withdraw this, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
He didn't have to speak.
Mr. Clerk.
2025-238, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE260416, Palo Alto Firework, Firewalls with Conversion One Inc. In the amount not to exceed $117,859.86 for the Information Systems Division for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second. Been properly moved and second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? I think this is one where we had someone signed up to speak. Am I correct?
No.
It's the next one? Okay. Oh, it's been properly moved and second to send it to consent. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
2025-239, an ordinance approving professional services agreement with Sterns, Crown Red and Schmidt Counseling Engineers, Inc. In the amount not to exceed $302,300 to provide engineering services assistance with preparation and submittal of a permit application, the authorization to use environmental and regulation, regulator, regulatory initiatives and rebate funds for the said project and authorizing, uh, authorizing a supplemental appropriation of the funds in the amount, uh, proper expenditure line for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for debate.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second for debate. Is there any discussion on this one?
Is there anybody could?
Yes.
Uh, we're gonna start with Alderwoman Nutriano.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, I would agree with Alderman Rockford if there is anyone to speak to this ordinance. Um, my first question is, in the paperwork, I did not see whether or not this, um, study was budgeted in this year. I, I don't recall hearing about this particular project.
Good evening. Thank you for calling me up. I, I happy to explain a little bit about this if you want. I don't necessarily think it's self-explanatory. I don't know. I really honestly can't remember. With ER IRF, I can't remember how that works out in the budget. So if we know something's coming out of that fund, you always have to come in and ask for the appropriation, whether it's budgeted or not. And I don't exactly know how counting lines up those things. So I really. It has to be all the time a supplemental. So whether, I, I don't know whether it's just saying that it's a supplemental and it's in there somewhere or if it's, if it's new to the budget for that reason, but.
Okay.
That answers your question.
Um, not, not really. Uh, uh, okay. And, and then, um, my other point to highlight, um, before you go on and explain this to us, um, I would just like to make everyone aware that, um, what was in the budget this year was an IRP for around the same cost and, um, we have not seen that come forward. So I just, just wanna, uh, remind everyone that.
Do you have, was it's probably double the, the cost of this for the IRP, I, I think in the budget. That's closer to $600,000, I believe, for the IRP.
Okay, well, the, a chunk of change that should be donated, or not donated, uh, excuse me, should, should go toward the IRP. Nevertheless, that was budgeted. So, yeah. Um, but please, yes, enlighten us.
Um, so going back, like if you guys remember, we had a lot of discussion about a year ago about, um, this one particular rule from US EPA. It's come, it's changed about, it's changed exactly three times in the last nine years, the standard that we've had to meet under that rule. And we came in and explained to y'all that we felt strongly that our current, so it's for, it, it affects one waste stream of water from our scrubber. There's a slowdown from the scrubber that creates this waste stream that's regulated. And that waste stream goes to the Sangamon, after being treated onsite at our pretreatment plant, it goes to the Sangamon County Water Reclamation District. We're the only plant in the country that has that situation. We're the only plant in the country affected in this particular way about, by this particular rule. And I think we, we had explained at the time, I know you weren't around then, so, that we only have three years to comply, whereas other plants would have five years to comply. So we're one year now into that timeline. Um, and we did get authorization to actually take a very unusual step of suing over this rule. So that lawsuit is still pending. Um, but we did not get the support of the agency to get a stay before the court. So the rule is still ticking. And then right now, the case is slowed down because the new administration wants to look at everything. So we don't really know what the future is for the rule, but we do know that our clock is ticking and we need to pursue, um, some steps towards coming into compliance. And this contract would be the, you know, we would come back later if we decided to build this particular technology. But this would involve all the preliminary engineering and the permitting for an underground injection well for this waste stream. Now, you know, we still believe strongly that the method of sending our pretreated wastewater to the sanitary district is the most environmentally proven technology. And the techno, other technologies provided in the rule, we feel are both unproven, not used anywhere in the nation right now and don't work, um, because we've tried one of them in the past. We had gone down the path many years ago. We think they don't work. And then finally, even if you would get them to work, we feel they had more damaging environmental impacts than, um, what we're doing now. So that was why we wanted to pursue the lawsuit. This option is really the only, um, option that we found to be environmentally acceptable way to go if we do have to do something different than what we're doing today. So we found a firm that worked on this project with Perry State. This is what they've been doing since 2020. So we feel it's a proven technology and we have some people that know what they're doing, but it's gonna take quite a while. And I don't think we'll be able to really get this done in the two years that we would need to, but we need to get moving to at least show that we're making an effort. So that's more background, I'm sure, than a lot of you wanted, but to say.
Any more questions, Alderwoman?
Uh, yeah, I, so, so we've spent money on, um, and we are spending money on challenge, challenging this in court, right?
Yeah.
And, um, and so now we're going to spend money on a study for a solution. And do you have any idea ballpark about the total cost of this well?
You know, we don't have a precise estimate. We do have some round figures, like within a certain guesstimate. I don't wanna be too specific. I mean, we do already spend quite a bit of money, um, sending the waste to the sanitary district. It costs over a million dollars a year just to send the waste to the sanitary district. So there would be some savings that would be applied towards that as well. But it, it will be more than 10 million and hopefully less than 20, somewhere in there.
Okay, and then.
But maybe not less than 20, can't be sure.
Okay, so more than 10 million. That's definitely a lot. Um, and so remind me again, the, us being the only plant that has to deal with this issue, isn't that because the other plants that process the flue glass gas the way we do have said that they're closing by a certain date and therefore exempt from the regulation? Like 2037 or something like that?
I mean, there are plants that have said they will close and then they don't have to do it. But it's that you had to tell them much sooner. Well, anyway, let me go back. No. Plants that are still operating, of which there are plenty. There are plenty of plants that are gonna continue operating. They have until 2029 to meet the standard, which is three years longer than us. There are quite a few.
Wait, so I thought we were the only ones.
We're the only one that doesn't discharge this wastewater directly to a stream.
Okay.
So US EPA has come out and said, in response to the case when we asked for the stay, and they said, we don't need to get a stay. We don't have a harm because we can just stop sending it to the POTW and send it to the stream and get three more years. And I, I'm, I'm just, as a person who worked in that field for many years, I was appalled to see that in writing by both, you know, the agency and the environmental group petitioners. But that is, those are the category of sources that were different then. We sent it to a POTW for additional treatment beyond that. Plus that, we had to meet the compliance deadline of October 2023, whereas those other plants have not yet reached 2025 deadline that they were gonna have under the old rule. So, you know, we, we had, we had two years less to do it and then the rule was changed again immediately after we had finished completing the last change. So the goalpost does keep getting moved a lot. And this solution, if it, if it pans out to be appropriate, and we bring it back, you know, for approval for construction, it would end this roller coaster, that's for sure. That would be one advantage to the solution because it would take us out of this back and forth on the rule, so.
Okay, and so we're looking at a $10 million cost for the whole project. Any idea how long, I think you mentioned how long it would take to build the well and get it operational?
It depends on how long the permitting takes. So it could be, what was the estimate they gave? For the permitting part though, right? Yeah, the permitting, they think, could be two years in and of itself. So I think there was an estimate of something like total time could be as long as 60 months and as short as 40. So it could still take 40 months and, on the good end, to get this finished.
Okay, so we're looking at spending a lot of money and putting something in place for a plant that we do not know is going to be legal to be operational in the next couple of decades.
Well, we know that we have a 2045 date under Illinois law, so that's 20 years. And like I said, we spend a million dollars a year to send it now to the sanitary district. So, I mean, I think, yes, if we were gonna close next year, we wouldn't be talking about this, but.
Okay, okay.
There are pretty tight deadlines in the rule to make those decisions to where it's not realistic for the amount of time we know we need to have this plant available.
Right, and so it seems to me, um, like an integrated resource plan would be able to, uh, address th, this issue and my concerns and let us know, you know, is this a good way forward?
Yes, so this, this number would go into the IRP and it would be part of the analysis for the, the economical choices for supply, absolutely. That would be, that'd be after the fact.
Yeah, I'm just.
And so we'll have these numbers. These will be good numbers by then. These will be more reliable numbers to use in that study, yeah. As we, as we move forward and develop these costs, that'll be helpful for the IRP to have those costs.
Okay, but I can't help but feeling this is a little bit putting the car before the horse on that. But you don't have to answer that. I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Debbie. Um, so just a little bit of clarification. We are not 100% committing to underground injection wells.
No, not today.
I, 'cause I have my own thoughts in, about, about that process. So this is, this is the utilities attempt to get as much information as possible in case we do lose the lawsuit where we're saying that pretreatment and.
Is prohibited, yeah.
And, and reuse of the fly ash is what we wanna do. They, we can't do that. So our options are to, you said the EPA and the environmental groups both agreed that direct discharge from our plant to the stream?
In the short term, that's what they said.
So how long would that be? I mean, again, I am actually not advocating for that in any way, shape or form. That sounds terrible, but. Okay, so that would, that would take us to 25. So if we had to fill in a gap while this process, if the underground injection well was our only option left to us, we would have an alternative to like, if we're sold, no, you can't send anything to, um, the pretreatment facility, we would discharge directly? Sorry, I, I'm still trying to wrap my head around that.
We'll continue to use our pretreatment plan and it really is very clean water. I mean, basically, what we've been told so far, by, we had one meeting with the agency about it and we have had a couple of discussions on our initial, um, meetings with the engineering firm that everyone seems to think that we're gonna get what they call a groundwater waiver, which basically says that our effluent is cleaner than the water down below because it's so briny when you get down that, that low. So it's really relatively clean water, but still, you know, we value the additional treatment that gets done at the POTW for sure. We have a really, you know, new, well-run, state-of-the-art POTW and we think we should keep using it. That is our plan and we're pursuing, like I said, we've gone above and beyond to pursue every opportunity to be able to do that. And we don't know, and do I know whether we'll win the lawsuit? No, I don't know also whether the rule will.
Change again?
Get changed again. So we'll just have to, this, I think, very much helps us roll with what might come.
Okay, and I guess, 'cause Alderwoman Nutriano brings up a good point. For the IRP, we wanna make sure that we have, and I understand, I mean, there, there's a reason that's expensive. It's, it's a lot of information that goes into that, that process. So you're saying, so having this information will give us a much better informed options for when we get to that phase of what else are we considering for that longer-term, um, means of addressing our wastewater stream?
Yes.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I, I think I'll, I'll leave it at that, but thank you. There's, there's, there's a lot in here.
Yeah, it's, it's overwhelming. It's a lot, so.
Yeah, but this is not, this is, this is not us committing to underground.
No, we just are, or getting the engineering work done to know how much it will cost to have a package 'cause it's beyond, you know, for small permits, we can do it in-house sometimes to put the permit applications together. But this is not something that's, we would be able to put together as an application. So they'll hand off the application and then we'll go from there.
Okay, and even if we get a permit for this, that's not a guarantee that we'll build it?
Yeah, I think it's much more likely, yeah, that we'll submit the application because we know that's gonna take a long time and then learn more about what happens along the way. We'll have an IRP. We'll have a lot of things that will come, a lot of information will come in in the meantime. But this does, you know, I know I have PJ Becker with me from my staff and he's definitely been pushing us to get this moving 'cause we know this timeline is long. And if we don't start, it's really gonna cut off options for us later.
Thank you very much, Debbie. Appreciate, thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Alderwoman. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair. Hey, Ms. Deb. Alderwoman Nutriano and Alderwoman Conley asked a wealth of questions. And like you said, this is overwhelming and I'm overstimulated at this point. I think with me and Alderwoman Conley, uh, being a part of the CWLP committee, I like, I think you said we're one year in, right, out of the three years that you have for the compliance? I was trying to take notes as you was talking too. It would be really good if we could sit down with you and go through this. This is a lot to explain and I definitely would not be, be able to answer a lot of these questions in the public. And I think too, that this is a great segue within these three years of compliance to do something in the community, to just be able to be transparent and tell them what's going on. And I would need your help doing that.
Absolutely.
So I, I would like to do.
An outreach would be a part of this permit, for sure.
Um, and, and so I'm glad you just said that too. Would it be something that would be yearly talked about with outreach? Or maybe twice a year, just for you can get feedback from the community and also just share any updates? Or like you said, sometimes the laws just keep changing on you, so you can update the community about that too?
Yeah, I'm, I, I hate to be specific and be wrong. I can visualize there'll be these points at which it's important to update folks, like, are we gonna apply for a permit? Or, um, did the rules change? Like, there's certain points, but I can't, I don't necessarily wanna say. It could be next month. It could be six months. Could be next year, but.
Okay, so I would just ask, um, that, I, I know we have the control, like, CWLP to do the community outreach. So I would ask that we do it every six months, unless there's no changes. And then you can say there's no changes taking place at the moment. But I think it's just really good for us to put that out there on the front street and be able to get some open dialogue and Q and A. And my last request would be, could we please do it in the evening where people are off of work by 5:30 so people can attend?
Oh, yeah, we never, okay, do things during the day.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Alderwoman. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Deb, the, if we, if we don't, if we don't meet the deadline, what, what usually happens? A fine? What, what, what usually happens?
Yeah, I mean. It's, trying not to make it too complicated. So right now, we're kinda regulated by the sanitary district, right? So I can kinda tell you how things work with that. This, then we would go back under the Illinois EPA and we probably would do it through a compliance schedule 'cause our permit will be coming up for renewal. And hopefully, you know, we could sit down at that point with the agency and say, you know, we're gonna need till the 2025 date. We might need a little extra time. And they'll put like milestones in there that we have to meet. And if we can't meet
I guess.
those agreed milestones.
Right, and I guess that was my point. By us, by us showing that we're moving forward with something, it may alleviate a potential fine by us absolutely doing nothing.
Right, if we wait and do nothing, that would not look good at all.
And, and then, um, uh, how long, how long does, doesn't it take about a year for IRP to, to, from start to finish? Is that, I, I'd seem to recall, do you remember off the last?
People to expect a couple years and maybe that's a little bit of an exaggeration. But if you count kind of from the point of going out to find the vendors and then the vendors come and present on the options and then run all the options, hopefully all that can be done in a year. But then you wanna bring it back and have discussion with the council and stuff. So at least, yeah, at least a year, but hopefully less than two.
I wanna say it was at least 18 months, the last one, maybe two years. I couldn't remember.
But there was a lot to deal with in that one. It was over, it was definitely pushing two years last time, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Anybody else up here on the horseshoe would like to address this? If not, we do have a citizen signed up. Uh, Ms. Lori McKernan.
Good evening. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Coalition for Springfield's Utility Future as a Sierra Club representative to that coalition. I'm gonna start by thanking Debbie Williams for answering a lot of my questions tonight, so hopefully this'll be short. This ordinance is requesting funding for preparation and submission of a permit application to the Illinois EPA for a Class 1 underground injection well at Dalman IV at the site of our drinking water. The ordinance includes identifying cost estimates for the design, construction and operation of the well. This ordinance is for pre-application studies and modeling, permit preparation and submittal, and a budget estimate for the costs of deep well engineering, design, construction and operation. So CWLP is asking for funds to apply for this Illinois EPA permit before knowing how much it will cost to design, construct and operate the well. Normal accepted business practices would be to do the study to create the cost estimates first and compare those costs to the other solutions prior to applying for a permit. to applying for a permit. So my question here would be, has CWLP shared with you the city council the cost-benefit analysis of this project as compared to other solutions? Flu gas desulfurization wastewater is the waste that is the result of scrubbing sulfur dioxide from the emissions at Dahlman IV. Leachate is formed when rainwater filters through wastes placed in a landfill. When this liquid comes in contact with buried waste, it leaches or draws out chemicals from those wastes. In this statement from two, uh, two seven, 2017 CWLP document, it says, "CWLP owns and operates an existing non-hazardous special waste landfill, the flu glass, flu gas desulfurization, which is permitted to dispose of flu gas sludge, bottom ash, fly ash, and lime sludge related to the operation of CWLP Power Generation Station." My question here is, can CW, CWLP confirm which landfills would contribute to this deep well? Would this come from the active FGDS landfill or one of the older inactive landfills? Class 1 wells are used to inject hazardous and non-hazardous wastes into deep confined, confined rock formations. Class 1 wells are typically drilled thousands of feet below the lowest underground source of drinking water. Injection zones typically range from 1,700 to more than 10,000 feet in depth. The injection zone is below and separated from underground sources of drinking water by an impermeable cap rock called the confining layer. The confining layer may be associated with additional layers of permeable and impermeable rock and sediment to separate the injection zone from the underground source of drinking water. Structurally, a disposal well is the same as an oil or gas well. Tubes of concrete and steel extend anywhere from a few hundred feet to two miles into the earth. At the bottom, the well opens into a natural, natural rock formation. There is no container. Waste simply seeps out, filling tiny spaces left between the grains of rock like the gaps between stacked marbles. So the purpose of my statement tonight is to question whether sufficient options have been considered for the issue of this wastewater, and to question why CWLP has chosen to fund the permit application and cost evaluation simultaneously. My intent is to raise these questions so the public understands what CWLP is proposing. So the remaining questions I have are, why is CWLP asking for funds to apply for the permit before knowing what the costs are? And how can a cost-benefit analysis of comparable solutions be done without this information? And finally, while the risk of failure of wells is low, this is our drinking water involved, so I'd like to know if CWLP can explain what the risks to our drinking water are of this underground well. And I would add one more question. I would ask what this, um, putting the waste directly into the streams actually means. I don't think it's as bad as it sounds. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, Alderman Gregory.
Sorry, I just, my, my only question would be, we have our way, um, they would like us to do it their way, and, and now we're in a lawsuit about it, about it, from my understanding, so will, will they even grant us a permit to, to do this? Just a quick question, I'm sorry. Considering?
Um, yeah, these, uh, these, it's a different category of permits, and, yeah, it's, it's a, you know, different group of people, whatever, but yeah, it, it's a legitimate, it's a legitimate way of becoming exempt from the other requirements that we're suing over. That's the best way to put it. Like, it's an established way of, you know, if you're under this rule, you'll do this way, and then they have established way of, of getting out of it, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Debbie?
Go ahead, Alderman.
I, I, I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't mean to interrupt. I just.
No, no, I'm done. I, I hate how you ask the question.
Yeah, that's all I should say.
I just didn't want, I just, I mean, I don't know, Debbie, if you're working on getting steps in, um, just want to, so Lori did bring up some, some questions that I think probably weren't completely addressed in, in what you were saying. I don't know if you want to address those now, or because we have it on debate for next week, if you want to just wait and we can talk about it next week?
I will be on vacation next week, but there'll be other people here that if you can, if you want. I mean, if there's specific ones.
Do you want to address them now?
I mean, I'm not going to, I'm trying to rem, she had a lot in there, and there were part of it that I had, or I feel like I'd answered by my, I know, she definitely had questions about, you know, which is totally valid, about explaining how it will be safe and protect our water supply. It's a very important question.
Right.
You know, I have gone to seminars and heard people explain all this. I think we'll be a lot more educated once the study is complete and we've learned, I mean, this is new to us. So I don't know, PJ, if you have anything you want to add about what you've learned about it, but, you know, I mean, this is, people tell me it's safe, but I don't, um, you know, we haven't, haven't learned all the details to be able to come to you with the certainty I usually want to have. This is the safest way to do it.
Because we don't currently operate any injection wells.
No.
So maybe we'll just hold these then, um, so that they can be addressed next week during council meeting, and that way, just give you some time to make sure you're comfortable.
Well, I don't, so do you want me to go through the video? And I don't really know. Lori, do you have specific, I would like to answer whatever questions you fill or unanswered that we can answer today. I don't think there's anything PJ and I can't answer today that we'd be able to answer next week.
So, and I, I think I did miss one, but.
So, but I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't write them down, is all, yeah.
So one of the questions was, and Lori, remind me if I missed anyone, um, she mentioned the landfill contributions to this well.
Yes, that was a good, I'm sorry, thank you for reminding me. Yes, so this is, so basically, um, another aspect of the rule that's new is currently we have a permit that covers, there's a small quantity of leachate that we manage from our landfill. It is our FGDS landfill, which doesn't really mean anything, I'm sure, to most people, but it's, um, it's a landfill where we're allowed to dispose of, um, ash and other material from the, from the power plant. Generally, we just use it for storage for when we're gonna, you know, if we have too much, um, we'll have it there temporarily and then send it off to beneficial reuse. So in general, it's not like you think of a landfill where everything is there permanently forever. We, we just have limitations on how long you can just leave them somewhere, leave stuff somewhere. So we've developed a permitted landfill to manage that material and give us flexibility. So, but that does generate a small amount of leachate, which is supposed to also somehow become zero discharge. And no one, I mean, it's, I think, a part of the rule that I think is very vulnerable to being reconsidered, but we're asking them to, um, study, including that with, within this, because we have no idea how you would get to zero of leachate. I mean, that's just not something that anyone in any landfill industry does. You know, you treat to certain standards, not to zero, so.
Okay, so now I have an add-on question to that. What's, what's kind of, if you can, what's our standard holding time for the fly ash at this location?
Um, it's less than a year, but.
I mean, good effort at staying in your seat, but come on up, so we can hear you on the microphone.
Yeah, exactly. Good effort.
But this way, everyone can hear you, too, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm PJ Becker with, uh, CWLP Environmental and Safety. Um, yeah, so our landfill, as, as Deb says, we just use it for just temporary holding for either gypsum, uh, ash, or lime sludge, uh, depending on if it's winter, the, it's not being mine reclamation, so it just really depends on the time of the year. So sometimes it's there for a couple weeks, a couple months. It just kind of just depends on when, uh, the time of year it is in, in operations and how much material we have, so.
And have we ever hit capacity at that?
No.
Okay, that's good to know.
No, no, not even close.
Generally, each year, we have to report the capacity and the capacity, a remaining capacity, and it's always the same as it was last year, basically.
Okay, that, that's good to, I mean, so we're not storing stuff for long periods of time there, um, which hopefully would reduce how much leachate we, we generate, but again, that's.
Yeah, the, the leachate basically comes from rainwater, stormwater.
Right.
It just kind of filtrates through it, and it's captured in our leachate collection system. There's not much leachate. It just depends on how much it rains.
We've had some wet, wet, wet years. And then, um, I know the other question that I wrote down, and I think Lori, I did miss one, but risk to drinking water. That, explain how that'll be addressed with either the study, or what are your expectations around getting information for that?
Yeah, as Deb said, I, I mean, just logically looking at it, if you're injecting wastewater a mile below the surface, and our lake is not, it's 20 feet deep, there's, you know, this well's going to be far away from, I, I assume it's going to be far away from the drinking water, so there's going to be absolutely no way there can be any type of leaking of the drinking water. I mean, if you're injecting it a mile down and, and the lake's 20 feet deep.
So it would have, so we're, we're expecting this with just, as you, as, as Lori detailed, filter through the, the marbles and, and go into?
Yeah, the, whatever, yeah, the strata, whatever injection strata is down there. So, um, it's just, uh, yeah, this is, the, the estimate, it's going to go about 3,000 feet down. That's what they're hoping, to get about 3,000 feet down, but it could go all the way down to 5,000 feet.
Okay, and I, um, I don't know if anyone else wrote down any other questions that Lori had asked that hadn't been covered? Oh, other solution, I, I guess I kind of felt like you did cover other solutions, but, but if you want to just talk about that a little bit, too?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of the things that she mentioned about like the costs, comparing costs and other solutions, I kind of felt like I had went through as, um, you know, we have been going down this road with US EPA for 10 years of, you know, we bought equipment, um, for millions of dollars that we never used because it didn't perform the way the manufacturer said it would. It's the same company that's selling this technology now. Um, so basically, there's lots of ways to get the waste stream down to a small amount, you know, from a large amount to a small amount, but they really still haven't figured out how to get rid of that last amount and make it zero. So it's an all-or-nothing thing that they've set up in this rule where you just have to absolutely get to zero, and the, the methods of getting to zero, we haven't seen anything that we consider environmentally acceptable by any means. And we've been going over them with you guys for a while, um, as far as explaining why we went to the extreme length of filing a lawsuit, so.
Thank you. And then, um, and again, I would say if there are any more questions, it's on debate, so we can, we'll bring this up again. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah.
Okay. If that is it, the motion is for debate, and it's been properly moved and seconded, so all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk.
2025, 240, in order to approve a professional services agreement with Hanson Professional Services, Inc., in the amount not to exceed $1,241,883 to provide engineering services in relation to the closure of Dahlman and Lakeside Ash Ponds, authorizing a use of the Environmental and Regulatory Initiatives and Rebate Fund for that, for the said project and a supplemental appropriation in the amount of, of the funds into the proper expenditure line for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
It's improperly moved and seconded to send this on to consent. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Public Works, 2025, 241, in ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Sangamon County Water Reclamation District in the City of Springfield for reimbursement of sanitary sewer collection for the Office of Public Works.
For consent.
It's improperly moved and seconded to send this to consent. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
2025, 242, in ordinance regarding their variance request for Sections 153.157L pertaining to the restriction of access to the arterial streets for Prosperity Business Park for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for debate.
Second.
It's improperly moved and seconded to send this to the debate agenda. Any, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Yep.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, go ahead, Alderman Nutriano.
Thank you, Chair. Um, is there perhaps anyone who can speak to this here? So, um.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so I, so this is specifically dealing with adding two entrances from these parcels or intended parcels to 11th Street, making it a total of three entrances in that small space.
This provides access to 11th Street from the, this new development, uh, which is essentially the old H.D. Smith property, yes.
Mm-hmm, and so, um, my question is, and I, I don't know if it's for you or maybe Corporation Council, but, um, we're, we're trying to, or they're asking us to, um, to grant variance to a regulation that exists. And so what is the point of limiting, uh, these entrances to 11th Street? Like, why, what is the point of 153.157L?
Uh, the request for access to 11th Street, that's the only arterial street that this property would have access to, if that answers your question. I, I've got the sketch map if you'd like to take a look at it.
No, no, I, I, I fully, I've seen it, yep.
So I would, I would refer to the engineering when they platted it, but they platted it with only one entrance, um, and so they're going to vary the initial subdivision plat to add the extra two. So because we've already approved what the subdivision was, um, or what the division of this property was, in order to change that, they need to get a variance from what that originally was. Um, as far as engineering, why they, what that would need, why they would want that, or, um, or, you know, how close these are with our standard practices. Um, I can't answer that now, but I can, I can meet and get an answer for you before this, uh, is up for debate next week.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Yeah, I, uh, this, uh, raises my antenna because I have several streets, uh, like MacArthur Boulevard in, uh, Ward 6, that have, um, lots of entrances right next to one another, um, and it is not good for the infrastructure or for traffic. And so, um, the idea of adding two, uh, two entrances here, um, whenever, you know, technically, uh, they could use the, the Knox Avenue entrance, um, and use Fiat, uh, I guess, I, I need some convincing on that, essentially.
Uh, I'd be happy to have, uh, the engineers reach out to you and, uh, and.
Okay.
Go into as much detail as you'd like to go into.
Okay, okay, great. And, um, yep, and I guess my only other question about this, it's sort of for all of the, the whole package, the whole project, the next ordinance is coming up. Um, they're saying that they want to use this as it is currently zoned for business and also light industrial or, or I-1. And so in looking at the parcels, the, they only have two that are unoccupied that could be I-1 or that are currently I-1. Um, and so, and they're, and they're currently, um, retention ponds. So I'm wondering if you had sat in on this meeting, this proposal, what, what the industrial aspects of the project, like, what, what uses do they anticipate in this area?
I couldn't speak to that specifically. All right, here we go. The expert.
Great.
My name is Sam Nichols. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. The two entrances, when this development was platted originally, those two entrances, plus or minus a few feet, were approved. This is between 20 and 30 acres. Have one ingress, egress. Out of 20 to 30 acres would be a nightmare. Property, the only two parcels in the property that are zoned I-1 right now are the detention ponds. Everything else is zoned B-1. I had made a recommendation early on to have a consideration for B-2. The impression was that that was going to be defeated, so the request was withdrawn. This property, since I was asked to be involved about a year and a half ago, when I started, it had grass and weeds on it, four feet plus. Weeds all around the detention ponds, mattresses, junk dumped on the detention, around the detention pond. If you drive out there today, it's all been cleaned up, and Mr. Chris Smith of the Smith family has spent the money to do that.
Well, it's his property, so that makes sense. It is his property. Um, I, I would just like to interrupt you there. Um, we had spoke and met about, um, We had spoke and met about what your, the Smith's plan and your plan for this was about a year ago, when the rezoning came up. And I, we had some discussions and then things fell silent. And then this comes across my desk, and I had no idea that it was coming forward. The neighbors in this area did ask that it be replatted and broken down into smaller parcels, so that it could be, it's more likely to be sold in a business use. But the, the tenants of this business park were adamant in making sure that the nature of the development stayed business park. And so I just have some issues with the fact that this is coming forward now and hasn't been addressed with me personally. And I, I can imagine not with the, the current tenants at the business park. So, yeah, I, I, I would have liked to have had those conversations offline and privately before we got to this point.
Well, normally, that isn't done when you replat, or when you get a subdivision to a point where the market will accept the development. I've been doing this for forty-five years. Some of the folks on this council know of some of the developments I've done. In forty-five years, I've never been denied one time. And secondly, everything I ever said I would do, I did. And it has been very lucrative for the city. I'm at a point in my life where I don't really need this. I'm trying to help somebody out. And to say that we are trying to come in without being open. We had a first reading, and this is the second reading. We tried to accommodate everything that Public Works asked us to do. Moving the entrances so they wouldn't interfere with power poles. Many other things that would still make the development work. So the city I just saw in the paper today is anxious to have development on the east side. This has sat there for probably between fifteen and twenty years. And so there was a desire because of the Smith's family's age, to do something with it, rather than just let it sit there. So the decisions are yours. And it was hopeful, and we were hopeful, that we would be able to do something with this land that would benefit the city, the economy, the tax base, and jobs. I'm not an owner of this land. I'm a consultant. I've been a broker. I probably would be asked to market it, but I'm not going uphill anymore in my career. I'd like to work as a team. If I'm going to have to fight and scratch for every four or five feet to advance the ball, I'm out. So I just ask you, in your wisdom, consider what you think is best for the community and for east side development. And I'm grateful for your consideration and your time and for hearing me out. Thank you.
Or you finish, Alderman?
Yeah, I would just like to say, for the record, for my colleagues, I have, again, no issues with the replating of this. I am concerned about the potential for congestion and the potential future uses and potential variances that may come forward if two entrances to Eleventh Street are added. So last time this came before us, it was discussed that Fiat and Knox are not roads capable of handling large trucks and I-1 type uses, okay? And so my concern is that these two entrances are going to be marketed as we, we can have industrial development here closer to Eleventh Street, because Eleventh Street can handle, at least I assume it can, the, the larger trucks and industrial uses. So, you know, that's my concern, and it's on debate. We can talk about it next week. I am happy to hear from any of you on this. Yeah, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, so I have some concerns I want to speak, and then I'll give it to you. So the Director Fuchs, I'll ask you, do you know what the usage is? Because I think this is, is where we're getting at. The interest is important, but I think a lot of help me would, to know what are they going to put there, what are, how they're going to use it. We know how it's zoned, but not necessarily what's going to, what is it going to be, do you know?
I cannot speak to that, sir.
You can't speak to it. And that's why it's on debate. Thank you.
And one more thing. Can, can the retention ponds be filled? And can that land potentially be used? So my concern is, one of these parcels that is completely a retention pond is purchased because it's I-1, and someone fills that in and then is able to use a huge parcel there for some light industrial use that is not favorable to the current direction of this neighborhood, which is to a business park.
I would have to have you speak with the engineers.
Okay.
Because this is a, a very technical issue, and I don't want to get it wrong.
Sure. Okay.
If I could, Chair?
Sure.
Real quickly, and again, Debbie may actually have experience with this too, but if those were installed as part of the stormwater management for that location, which I, I don't know if they were or not, but if that was the original intent, I would be shocked if they would be able to fill them and, and not actually even need additional compensatory storage for stormwater for any development on that, this site. So given the size of these lots, I would assume that stormwater management will still be an issue for them. And, and generally speaking, that's, that's managed through retention ponds on, on, onsite, so it has to be able to take, you know, you're taking a permeable surface, turning it impermeable, you have to compensate for that. So I, again, I'm not the expert on this either, but my, I'm, I'm going to make an educated guess, probably not.
Okay. That's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
But I will also let Director bring back an even more educated answer. But I would just say for now, I, I would be surprised if that was allowed, if that was the original intent of those ponds.
Okay.
The Director is desperate for a more educated answer, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director. And I apologize. I just, thank you, Chair.
Alderman Gray.
Sure, thank you. Chair, just a real quick question. Can you remind me, zoning, what, B-2, 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 what type of use does that give us? Anybody? B-2?
E-2?
Anybody? Talk to me.
General Business District. So there's, I mean, there's a whole list of uses, but.
No, I'll, I'll go through that. I look forward to some more discussion. I'm interested in the, in the development, but I definitely share, share Alderman's concerns. I, you know, I'm familiar with that area, and Fiat really is just a circle that goes on to Baker. There's not much on that side of it, but I definitely respect the businesses to the west of that. Let's talk. I think we can get it done. All right, thank you. Appreciate you.
Any more comments? The motion is for debate, and it's been properly moved in second. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-five, two forty-three, in ordinance regarding a variance request of section one five three point one five eight B-2 pertaining to shared access in Prosperity Business Park for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for debate.
Been properly moved for debate? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Twenty, twenty twenty-five, two, two forty-four, in ordinance approving the location of, and sketch map of Prosperity Business Park for the Office of Public Works.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm confused as to why these are all broken out. So can we pass this without the other two?
It would be without. Let me pull this one up, sorry.
Because my packet that I received has it all together.
I would say this, if I may, put them all on debate, Jen.
Okay. Motion for debate.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for debate? No more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-five, two forty-five, in ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Highland Software, Inc. for the use of Highland Cloud, a hosting platform for on-base electronic plan review and document, document management system in the amount not to exceed one hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars for the Office of Public Works and Utilities.
Move consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for consent. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Twenty twenty-five, two forty-six, in ordinance authorizing the supplemental appropriation in the amount of three hundred and sixty-five thousand, sixty dollars and fifty cents from unappropriated fund balance to accommodate FY twenty-five, Third Street Greenway project for the Office of Public Works.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for this to go to the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Chair, I actually.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
I'm sorry, Chair.
Alderman.
Yeah, so I just double-checked, and there is no backup on this. And I was wondering what it's for, or is this just moving money? Because I know in the budget, and, and we had recently passed, like, I don't know, like, funding in the amount of like one point two-ish million on this. So how does that relate?
This is part of the one point three million dollars from a DCEO grant
Okay.
that was divided between last fiscal year and this fiscal year. And we only spent about half of last year's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So this is basically taking the unexpendant funds from last year and moving them to this year. But it's all based on, on the engineering work design for the Third Street Greenway.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
It's been properly moved in second to send this to consent. No more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-five, two forty-seven, in ordinance amending ordinance four nine nine dash one two dash two four with Green Demolition Contractors, Inc. for abatement and demolition of the Old Town Apartment Complex by changing the funding source and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount not to exceed five hundred and eight thousand dollars for the Office of Public Works.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at the request of Corporation Counsel to hold this in committee.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second to put this on hold in committee.
We'll move.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
General City Business, twenty twenty-five, two, I'm sorry. Twenty twenty-five, two forty-eight, in ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by one for Martini's LLC, DBA Martini's, located at twenty-three forty-nine West Monroe.
Move to consent.
Second.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. If no discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-five, two forty-nine, in ordinance authorizing payment to Christopher Rhodes, a sergeant for the Springfield Police Department, for settlement of workers' compensation claim for case number twenty-four dash WC dash zero zero one four six nine.
Move consent.
Been properly moved in second to send this to consent. Hearing no discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-five, two fifty, in ordinance authorizing execution of a contract with the city of Springfield and the Board of Trustees, Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois for the Fire Protection Service from July one, twenty twenty-five, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and ten cents for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move consent.
Second. Properly moved in second to send this to the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-five, two fifty-one, in ordinance authorizing execution of agreement and payment to Jeff Carter in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars for expenses related to the Carpenter's Park Pavement Project for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Twenty twenty-five, two fifty-two, in ordinance authorizing payment to Ace Sign Company, Inc. from Route sixty-six grant number twenty-five dash three three six zero zero four for grant expenses in the amount not to exceed ninety-five thousand dollars for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second.
Been properly moved in second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Alderman Rockford.
Dave Fuchs, could I ask Director? And this is, you know, unfinished or new or whatever, but.
This is unfinished business.
Let's see if we can get it finished, because that road's been blocked for quite a few weeks. Is there, can you give me an update on North Grand Avenue? Between Eighth Street and, everything gets blocked off.
Good question.
My understanding that they should be finished in the next ten days or two weeks. They've been delayed a bit by weather, and I think they've had a couple of issues that they were unaware of, but I think we're close to the end.
Okay, on that portion?
Yes.
And then we're going to move around the corner?
Yes, sir.
And we're, we're talking, probably talking about the same length of time with that also?
Long time, yeah.
Okay, so I sent you an email yesterday, can, you know, text, concerned about parking and that kind of stuff for those businesses.
Sure, sure.
So please, see what you can do there.
Absolutely.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Tell them to start on the south side. Any more unfinished business? No more new business? Anybody got new business? I, oh, Jesus. Alderman, are you going to take, okay.
Yes.
So we're going to go with, thank you. Alderman Donnelly.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess my question is to Corporation Counsel. I've been asked by a couple of existing businesses what our process is for auditing businesses that have gaming that are, are under the umbrella of the newer law that requires them to have sixty percent of their revenues come from non-gaming.
Sure. So we, we identify a quarter of the establishments, which is about what we can handle, to audit their books of account for the, for the prior year, the year that they paid taxes. And then any of those that are in violation, if they're close, we'll give them, we'll give them notification that they're in violation of our ordinance, and we're going to give them a re-audit. If their sales are not close to that sixty, forty percent split than they are, then they are issued a violation for that.
What's the penalty for the violation?
Five thousand dollars to start.
Okay, have we, have we, and I just don't recall, because it's been a number of years. Do we have the ability to pull back the licenses because of they're not in compliance?
Yes, we do. So we levy the five thousand dollar fine, and then they will be re-audited. And if they do not pass that audit, we will revoke the license.
Okay, and then, thank you for that answer. If we get a specific complaint about a particular location, I, I believe the city's policy is that they then, since we have a complaint-driven system, other than the audit you described, a quarter, on a quarterly base, a quarter basis, will we go in and look at those requests, those specific businesses' books?
We, we can certainly do a targeted audit. We've received, we've, I, I would say even less than a handful of complaints, but I can think of one that we've received, however, that was grandfathered in establishment. But if we do receive a complaint, we will investigate it and perform the audit.
And I know, I make sure that that, the one in particular I got to complain about, we'll make sure that that is in the system. But, you know, what, what is being alleged, and again, alleged, maybe, maybe right, maybe wrong, is that there are. But, you know, what, what is being alleged, and again, alleged, maybe, maybe right, maybe wrong, is that there are, we, we are taking criticisms for some of you all as well, is how can we keep allowing these places when you know they're not gonna adhere to the sixty percent rule? So, i- i- if, if what I'm requesting is, if we can have our staff really take a look at the business plan and when these new licenses come about before the council, that we have a better understanding, maybe even summary of what, what they're doing, because, uh, they're very, uh, and I'm not criticizing, but it just would be helpful so that we're making the right decision, because granting a license that leads to gaming and we all know that we have a, a significant number of those per capita in the city. And a part of the problem is around the city, I know we can't control that, but I would appreciate if we could, I know that's under your purview as well, if we could do that as, in the future.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Counsel.
Are you finished, Alderman?
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
Remove your name, please.
I can do that.
Okay, Ald- Alderman Gregory. Boy, he forgot that.
She reminded me last time, thanks for that.
I'm new here.
I'm just gonna speak real quickly, um, this, this, uh, Thursday, the twelfth, uh, begins a eight-day celebration of Juneteenth, uh, more than a celebration in a park, it's an eight-day lineup of community education, engagement, and free entertainment. Uh, the Juneteenth celebration is a cultural education and family-friendly experience, um, that is sure to be enjoyed by all ages. Um, it kicks off on the twelfth at Southeast High School Auditorium, they will be crowning the Mister and Misses Juneteenth, that's at six o'clock. Our city website does have a full listing of these, but it will, as, as I read, go eight days all the way to, um, the actual Juneteenth, six-nineteen, um, where they will do a, a youth breakfast at the Salvation Army Center. This, this celebration not only takes place on the East Side, but it takes place downtown at, at, um, our Illinois State Museum, they have a great exhibit of artists, um, who have done some amazing work in there. Uh, I encourage you all to go see it, um, they have a beautiful timeline, um, that, that really, um, points out some historical things all the way up into, um, what it relates to Springfield and, um, us being the home of the Great Emancipator, um, w- w- we definitely have, uh, done all we can to lift up, um, this great celebration. Uh, this city made it a official holiday back in twenty-twenty and we start celebrating that, um, in twenty-twenty-one, so I just wanted to let everyone know, come out, have a good time at one of the events and other than that, I'm outta here.
Thank you, Aldman. Chair. Uh, Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, I, I, on, I just wanna congratulate, uh, S.H.E. Baseball for their championship over the last weekend. I also, um, we, we had some, uh, some track, track and field athletes that finished high, uh, in state and I just wanna congratulate them as well. I think with the high school season over, I think overall Springfield did, did very well throughout the state and, and I know, uh, I think there was some academic bowl people that finished in the top as well and so, so, uh, it's, it's always great to see, see that, so thank you.
Thank you, Aldman. Alder Woman Conley.
Thank you, Chair, and, and thank you, Alderman, I also want to add to that list, the, um, Springfield High Girls Soccer Team finished third in the state. It was, uh, it, I was not able to attend, I was, I was really excited for them, but it sounded like it was a really tightly fought game, they were, they played their hearts out and third in the state is something to be very proud of, so congratulations to them, too.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, I was just gonna, they, they brought it up, but I, I, to all of our kids, all of our young people, we hear a lot, you know, about, about things that go on, but I will tell you that our kids, our young people at all of our schools, they are competing on a state level, on national level, all of them, every school, we, they're, they're banging it out, they're really, they're really, um, whether it's sports and, um, as, as Alderman Hanauer said, we got a group, I think they're in Washington, DC, um, from a fantastic contest, um, that, that they've done, so, um, I tip my hat to all of our kids, all of our youth in this city, they, they are, they are really, really, um, representing us well all throughout this country, thank you.
Thank you. Clear your name, thank you. Alder Woman Purchase.
Thank you, Chair, um, Sean throw, stole my thunder, that's what I was just about to say with all the kids, but you know, track and field is a passion of mine, so I was paying attention and it just seems like this year it has been off the charts with basketball, baseball, soccer, swimming, so I just wanted to say congratulations as we're going into the summer. I know when I was younger, my parents always said that, don't mean just hang out with your friends and just sit and chill out, you still gotta get up, do your push-ups, you still gotta go and exercise, you still gotta go and weight lift, so just encouraging them all to stay active over the summer. And then I wanted to, uh, bring it back around to Juneteenth. Um, so I took a few notes of just what Juneteenth meant to me. Juneteenth is a powerful reminder of resilience, liberation, and ongoing journey towards true freedom and equality. Juneteenth is just not about history, it's about honoring the strength of our ancestors, celebrating Black culture and contributions, and continuing to work for justice and equity today, so it's both a celebration and a call to action. With today's climate, I think it's just really, really important, um, this is an example of all of us just be, being able to be in the same room, whereas back in the day, you couldn't, you couldn't do this, we couldn't talk to each other, we couldn't stand next to each other, we couldn't take pictures with each other. So I hope everybody is really paying attention to what's going on and we can continue to be the examples. I hope to see everyone out, I was just a little, um, disappointed, uh, me and Alderman Gregory and Alder Woman, no, um, I was about to say Notriano, but I know how to say your name. But we were at the Black Lives Matter procession and, um, I love our police because I see DC Dot in the back, one of my faves, but we didn't have any support with leading the procession. And, you know, cars had to stop at certain lights because they couldn't just keep going, so I would hope next year that we could participate and help support that activity, um, and that, and just celebrating what's going on, that's number one, and number two, just to see more of leadership there, too. There is a lot of, a lot of, uh, we've came far, but we still have a lot more to do and we have to all be accountable for supporting truly what it means and how everyone is affected and especially what has taken place over this last year right here in our own backyard that went national. It's really important to step up and step in, so I just wanted to say that for next year, if we could please support that and make sure we block off the streets, it's, it's just as important as everything else that's going on that we support, too. So, thank you.
You know, someone told me Alderman Williams was there, too.
Oh, I'm sorry, he was in the park, I'm sorry. And I'm, and I made mention of that when I gave my speech out there, I was like, we gonna see him in the park, don't worry. I'm sorry.
Citizen signed up to speak, Mr. Clerk, oh, oh, come on up, Director, real quick. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Chair, uh, hot off the presses, I want to give a shout-out to, um, and I, forgive me for saying the name incorrectly, Yogesh Rao, who grew up in Springfield and won Jeopardy Master Series last week. He attended several schools here up until he was age fourteen, so, yeah, something to be proud of.
Yes.
Put the lantern, Sean.
Lantern, nice.
Put the lantern.
You know.
Class of sixty-six.
Oh, three. I'm just making sure ain't nobody else on, you can do a last minute, all right, come on, Director.
Good evening, everyone, since we were talking about new business and events that are coming up, um, Amplified Fathers, which is a wonderful nonprofit organization that, um, is here in Springfield and also in Decatur, is doing their annual men's summit on Saturday at nine-thirty at the Salvation Army. I had the privilege to attend last year and it was really wonderful sitting down with other men in the community, uh, other fathers, even men who are not fathers, just kinda sit and have open discussions that we don't oftentimes get to have in a very, like, protected and personal space, where you can be very honest about the things that you're going through. Mental health is a very important issue that we have right now, especially in the black male community, so having the opportunity for an organization to put on a free event like this that you can go online and register for, we actually got some really nice swag bags last year with little travel kits and grooming kits and T-shirts, uh, it's absolutely wonderful, I would encourage everybody in the community, uh, men who are fathers, thinking about being fathers, grandfathers, or just men who really need to talk to somebody else and, and have that, you know, like-minded conversation, understanding, I would encourage everyone to come out to the Salvation Army location on Clear Lake at nine-thirty AM on Saturday, June the fourteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Alderman Rockford.
Actually, Chair, I.
Alder Woman Conley first.
Boy, you guys, it's on it tonight, okay, Alder Woman Conley.
You know what? You gave us an extra chance and, and I want to say thank you to, um, Director Posey, um, I really am grateful my parents don't watch this because I forgot, as you did for Mother's Day, to wish all of the fathers, those, again, hoping to be fathers, uh, those standing in for fathers, Happy Father's Day this Sunday, we appreciate you, uh, you are critical and thank you, thank you, so.
Thank, thank you.
Happy Father's Day, gentlemen.
Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, so, and again, you, we got our Levitt Amp concerts going on Thursdays, they started back up, so get down there, also, we got good baseball at Robin Roberts Stadium with the Lucky Horseshoes, get out and support them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we finished? Mr. Clerk.
Hold on, hold on. Rihanna Roberts. Speaker.
Okay, hi, guys, it's been like a month. When fascism comes to America, it will be wrapped in the flag and carrying across. Over a hundred thousand reported deportations and arrests have happened under this current administration. Terrible things are happening. Helpless people are being dragged out of their homes and workplaces, families are being torn apart, and children are coming home to their families being gone. And citizens are being shot with rubber bullets and arrested for exercising their rights to protest and it's only been six months. Springfield has already had visits from Homeland Security and a local immigration rights advocate had her own story twisted against her own belief to try to push this narrative. It feels like this city has done nothing to take precautionary measures to make sure what is happening in LA has no chance of happening here. It might seem like a stretch, it might seem like, well, that would never happen in Springfield until it does. And to some, this is just the way it's supposed to be and people get away with turning a blind eye because it would never happen to them, it would never happen to their family, and if it doesn't directly affect some people, they don't care, but we don't have the luxury of waiting until it personally affects us anymore. This is directly related to white nationalism. White nationalism is not only rising, it's being classified as law, it's written into policy, and it's being weaponized to suppress marginalized communities under the illusion of national security. Back in twenty-twenty-one, DePaul University released research showing white nationalist ideology has grown by two-thousand percent. There's evidence that supports white nationalism being considered the number-one domestic terrorism in this country. Yet, it runs unchecked. Even something as simple as MAGA gets brushed off as a slogan, but those who see what's really going on understand that a statement such as that is far more sinister than just being a red hat. It's a rally cry for a version of America that was never built for us. And what frightens me more than these raids and the bullets and the arrests is the silence from those in power who have the ability to stop it. Silence is the breeding ground for white nationalism. And when we do get loud, our protests are met with military deployment, tear gas, and rubber bullets. Just days ago in Los Allen, Los Angeles, over four-thousand National Guard troops and seven-hundred Marines were deployed, all to suppress a protest against ICE raids in a predominantly immigrant neighborhood. This operation cost taxpayers a hundred-and-thirty-four million dollars. And if it can happen in LA, it can happen in Springfield. California's governor and several mayors are now working to ban the deployment of US troops against their own citizens, and this is why this matters tonight at our city council here in Springfield. I'm going to be completely honest when I say I don't believe the mayor would back the people of Springfield if this were to happen here. I don't believe that she would fight for our protection or stand up to this administration if she had to. Her actions have shown that when her constituents are practically begging for her to care about people who don't have the strength to come up here and speak for themselves, all she does is stare at us blankly or point us into another direction and to go talk to somebody else. This is no longer about an if this will happen, it is merely a when. As a resident of this town, I need to know that my mayor will do whatever it takes to protect her citizens, because although y'all work for the government, y'all serve us. The people of Springfield should be your priority, but it rarely feels like we are unless we're throwing money into your pockets or supporting your, uh, campaigns or the car dealerships that we just love so much. And to the Alder people, please, if you are not already, please begin having conversations about what you have the power to do to protect us. What you care to do to show the people of Springfield that if ICE were to come raid us, if we were to have the National Guard deployed in our citizens, that we can trust that there are people up here that are going to back us, that are going to speak up for our support and make sure that the constituents that voted you into these seats are protected. Because when we come up here and all we get are these blank stares and some of you, you engage, but those of you that don't care, I don't feel like you will protect us and we don't have time for that anymore.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk. Um, I'm sorry, Aaron Cahill?
Just so everybody's aware, I'm gonna go ahead and give you a trigger warning, I will be talking about some things that may not be comfortable. Good evening, members of council, city officials, and community members, my name's Aaron Cahill and I stand before you as a concerned resident and advocate for human rights and a proud member of our diverse Springfield community. I'm here to call in this council to take a firm, moral, and lawful stand in protecting our residents from the harmful overreach of Immigration and Customs Enforcement, better known as ICE. Springfield has always prided itself on becoming, being a welcoming city, a city built on the values of fairness, compassion, and, and justice. These values are under threat when ICE conducts raids in our neighborhoods, detains parents on their way to work, and causes fear among families who contribute to the very fabricas of this city. These actions don't make us safer, they tear apart communities. Let me be clear, federal immigration system is broken. While immigration law is a federal matter, the way we choose to engage or refuse to engage makes the world of, makes world of difference to local, on the local level. When local law enforcement collaborates with ICE, even indirectly, trust in our city institutions erodes. Residents become afraid to report crimes, witnesses fear coming forward, children are traumatized, entire families in constant, live in constant fear. We will send a message, clear and unapologetic, that Springfield will not be a pipeline for unjust detentions, deportations, and racial profiling. That's why I urge the city council to pass an ordinance barring local law enforcement from cooperating with ICE detainers and not, and sharing non-public information without a warrant signed by a judge. I understand we have state laws, but that does not prevent us from putting forth ordinances furthering that. Ensure that city resources, funds, personnel, and facilities are never used to support ICE. While the state says our local law enforcement can't participate in ICE raids, that doesn't mean ICE can't pay you to borrow one of our facilities. For example, the basement of the, uh, city council chain, building. Ain't nothing in that law stopping ICE from paying the city to store, to house people down there. Ensure that city resources, funds, okay, um, publicly affirm Springfield's commitment to being a sanctuary city where no one lives in fear because of where they were born. This isn't about politics, this is about people. The undocumented mother who wakes up at four AM to clean offices downtown, the dreamer studying at Lincolnland with hopes of becoming a nurse, the family who fled violence only to find a different kind of terror at their doorstep. We have a responsibility to protect all who call Springfield home, not just in word, but in action. If we're serious about public safety, economic stability, and moral leadership, we have to draw a line. We must say not here, not in Springfield, not on our watch. The things going on in LA currently by the federal government are very illegal. I was in the National Guard for just under five years. The clear overstep of activating the National Guard without talking at all to the governor is illegal by federal and state law. The clear overstep of activating the National Guard without talking at all to the governor is illegal by federal and state law. The clear overstep is ridiculous. And then to have those guys and gals out there, no food, no cots. They put the cart before the horse, did not plan anything and said, hey, we're going to send a bunch of these guys and gals with riot shields as a show of force. We don't need that on our streets. I'm one of the few that can honestly say I will probably never have to worry about ICE grabbing me up. Unfortunately, our immigrant community and our BIPOC community don't have that luxury. They don't. I hate to say it, but they can grab any of the, our BIPOC community members and hold them and say, prove that you're from here. Prove to me that you're American. Your, your ID doesn't prove that anymore unless you have a real ID, but then they can demand more. So I know I ain't carrying around a birth certificate. What do you do? You know?
Michelle Pollak.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Pollak. I live in Manchesterwood subdivision. We had an incident in our subdivision, June 5th. I received a phone call just before 8:00 p.m. from one of my neighbors that a RV decided they want to do camp in our subdivision on the street. And so I went up there and I, I was not polite. I was a Karen. I was very upset. What makes you think that you can just pull into any of the streets and just camp? What do I pay property taxes for? So we called the non-emergency police line and the dispatch lady said that this has already been addressed. We've already had the police out there and there's, they can spend the night. Well, that didn't sit very well with me, so I asked to file a complaint. And I talked to a sergeant, talked to a sergeant Mullen, number 737. And he said that there are no RV restrictions in the city ordinance. Just didn't make any sense to me. Why am I paying property taxes? I'll sell all my stuff, get an RV and just go from block to block to block and just live in my RV. Well, I had no choice but to wait and I lost sleep that night, 2:00 in the morning. I just wanted to drive up there and just lean on my horn, just get them people out of my subdivision. 4:00 in the morning, I woke up. I just wanted to get in my truck and I just wanted to drive there and I wanted to lean on my horn. Then people don't belong there. There's a campground, there's state fairgrounds is just around the corner. Walmart's within, within a mile. And then there's a frontage road. Why, why are you in our subdivision? And so I waited and 6:00 in the morning, I went out there, got dressed, get ready for work and I took all the pictures I needed to take. Very upset. And I leaned on my horn before I headed to work. And I waited. Out of respect for the alderman, I wanted to wait. I didn't want to call him at night because this happened at late at night. And I don't want to come too early. I had to wait. And the alderman reached me first. And I'm here to compliment my alderman, Alderman Rockford here goes above and beyond. And he had that matter taken care of. Lickety split. We had four squad cars out there and they gave him five minutes to leave. Man's magical. I don't know what to say. I was grateful. I lost sleep and I'm sure many people in our subdivision lost sleep. Today, a deputy Dodd reached out to me today, number 593. And he stated to me that his job is to address concerns about our police department. And he too agrees that he doesn't understand, but he can't find the ordinance. So I don't understand what the problem is. I don't understand why it's not specific. I would, there's movies out there with Chevy Chase and you know, where his cousin comes and lives in the RV while he's in the house. We have issues right now in our subdivision where a house wants to have an RV at the back of their property and let their teenage kid hang out there with his buddies and pals with an extension cord going to the house. We already have issues with RVs. I didn't need the police department to okay a RV from out of state just to camp in our subdivision. I'm hoping this matter will be taken care of. I don't know what else to say to address. I'm hoping that the deputy Dodd will address the Sergeant Malone. I don't understand why it's just not common sense. You just can't park in a subdivision on the street and live in an RV. Our alderman goes above and beyond and I want to thank Alderman Rockford for everything he does. And I hope this matter gets addressed. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you could stand there for a minute, Alderman Rockford wants to address you.
Yeah, so Michelle, you know, looking at, at the ordinance, there's, it's in Corporation Council. You know, so there's some fine lines in there and I think we need to address it because in one, you know, paragraph, it says no RVs, motorhomes. And then in another paragraph, they can stay there up to 48 hours. So also going on is a lot of complaints about tow trucks. And I know I've talked to Director Fuchs about it and I believe I talked to Chief Beal about it and some of the zone managers. But so again, I, I just don't think anybody would want an RV pulling up from Montana. Now, you know, I was asked by the couple of the officers that showed up, did you knock at the door? And I said, I don't know who's driving that RV. I don't know what's going on inside. Now, when they knocked at the door, the gentleman says he doesn't have to show any proof of identity or any of this stuff. So who knows what could have been going on in there or what he's done prior to getting there. So again, I don't think anybody appreciates or, or needs an RV pulling out in, into a subdivision, staying there for upwards of 24 hours and then, you know, refusing to, to acknowledge the, the police officers. So again, Michelle, I appreciate your compliments, but again, I mean, the, the ordinance is, there's got to be some, I think something done with that, you know?
And I'm, I'm happy to talk with you and work with you about that. Right now, 79.29 of our city code allows for up to 48 hours. So that's what, that's what our officers are there, are able to enforce. But if we want to make some caveat about neighborhood streets, because right now we just limit it to public streets, something I'm happy to work with.
Well, I, I just know that, I, I just know, let's use a tow truck, you know, uh, because they're on call. And the issue is that, you know, I know I'm getting off base a little bit, but I'm not because they park at home because they get, they get a timeline to, to go to the scene of an accident. Okay? But these motorhomes can sit there up to 48 hours. And again, I, we, this was from Montana, you know, so I just think, I just think, you know, there's got to be some kind of, looking at this ordinance and do something with it. So again, thank you, Greg. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Carlson.
Thank you, Chair. Larry, good job, by the way, on this. But my question, Corporation Council, because I've had a similar issue, but isn't there a differentiation between a camper in the yard up to 48 hours as they load it and do whatever for a trip versus actually sleeping in the RV for two hours? Isn't there a distinction? I mean, you can't even sleep in that thing, I don't think, for a day or two. Versus an empty RV.
If they're, if they're living in it, then, then that's a, a different issue.
That's a separate issue, right.
That can be difficult to prove. So, but that.
But there is, there's, there's, there's a distinction.
But they can't park on a public way for up to 48 hours.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think it's probably going to be some further discussion and maybe make some changes, you know? Okay, Alder Nurturiano.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Just wanted to throw this out here. Alderman Carlson, to address what you're talking about, someone who owns the RV, you, like, having it there to load or unload. Couldn't we add something that stipulates like when you run the plates for the RV, it has to be somehow tied to the residence? And that way, yeah. That way you can't just have some random person who like doesn't live on the street. Like if the RV is not tied to anyone on the street, like it has to go.
Yeah, I think, I think what we could do is if there's not consent with the adjacent homeowner or something, those lines would, would be what I was thinking when talking with Alderman Rockford, so.
Just my idea. Thanks.
Is that okay?
Mr. Clerk.
Ken Pasha.
I thought this was America. Are you kidding me? The crime of sleeping in an RV? He's got to ID himself to the cops? Dude, are you kidding me? That's wild. You know how many people randomly park on my street, down my street? Dude, I've fallen asleep in a parking lot on a cross-country trip. It's none of your business what I'm doing in this country. If I'm not committing a crime, you asking me for ideas invasive. You're forcing some poor guy who just happened to be from Montana interact with four cop cars? You're telling me with the number of traffic I hear down 11th Street, which sounds like a bike race after 11:00 p.m., you had the time to send four cop cars for an RV that did nothing? Literally nothing but park on the street it has a legal right to park on, right? Was it, was it disallowed from parking there? Can anyone answer that? Was he, was it illegal for him to be there? Then why are we calling the police on him? That is absolutely bonkers that our resources are being used in such a way to quash someone's personal freedom. I have the right of movement. No, you can park wherever you want. Yes, you can. I can literally park anywhere I want and if they come to tell me to move, that's fine. But on a residential street, we're going to scan license plates to see if they live on the street? That's none of your business. What have they done to warrant that level of suspicion? People need to mind their own business. Losing sleep over a random RV? Are you kidding me? Bro, get a hobby. That actually upset me enough. I had to spend about a minute and a half on that because that's just crazy, man. Mind your own business. In this world, there are enough problems out there. You shouldn't be looking at your neighbor's plate unless it's empty. See if they need something, not to see if it's too full or they're doing something you don't like. My neighbors do all kinds of stuff I don't like. You know what I do? I go over and I knock on their door and I speak to them like a community member. Because it's just that easy, not some wild tale about some crazy, you know, illegal person or crime committing criminal that's hiding out in an RV. I mean, come on, man. That is just a wild level of suspicion for somebody that didn't do anything to anyone at all. And if that's how people walk around looking at the world, we should be worried about those kind of people. Because quite frankly, there is nothing wrong with parking on a street and minding your own business. This is a public world. If you don't own that street, it's none of your business. You shouldn't be going, calling the police over something like that. I'm 100% sure they have more things to do in this city than that. Now, I'm going to follow up on something else because I, that 11th Street extension there with those two arterials, I absolutely hate that idea. Right there by Quick and Easy is already an insane intersection with, I believe, 16 to 20 lanes amongst those four cross streets, or not cross streets, but areas. So I mean, why would we add two industrial truck lanes to come out less than what? Maybe 150 yards, 50 yards even away from those lights? That seems a little unusual to me considering the level of traffic there. You guys ever come over there on 11th late at night? What's that like? It's a racetrack because there's only two stoplights between Ash and Stevenson and I can blow both of them. Everybody does at that late at night. If you don't believe me, stop out. Don't park in the lot though, right there on Stanford and 11th. You might get four cop cars. Somebody might feel you being suspicious minding your own business. That's just wild to me. I mind my own business. It might not seem like it, but I do. I don't worry about what other people are doing in their cars or if they're tucked off in an alley. I got that New York City attitude. Mind your own business or it might become your business. It's that simple. Keep it to yourself. Now, I want to touch on last week, that poor woman that came up here and moved me into tears in public. What are we going to do about the S.H.A.? Because those conditions are still there. Water damage, black mold, roaches, bedbugs, fleas in that building specifically. I know someone who's talked to the residents directly and those conditions still exist. So we can send a resident over to Ethan to help her and that's wonderful that we do. But what about the rest of the residents in that building? Springfield Housing Authority has a long history of this kind of behavior. You don't believe me, go look it up. And the fact that we have a resident having to come here and beg you guys for help because they're going to get evicted on Friday for retaliation for complaining about the terrible things that have happened to them, should give all of you pause and be warning some level of investigation, right, from our inspectors from the city? I've seen inspectors send into local businesses for almost no good reason. So I can almost guarantee that poor woman come up here should have warranted every single division of our inspectors to pop out there and see if she's telling the truth. Because that poor woman was crying in the hallway and it took someone like Tiara to stand up for her. So I mean, that's just pretty frustrating to me that that.
Well, I, I do want to have privilege as a chair and address you on, so that building's in Ward 3. And, and that building, it has its challenges as, as the S.H.A., you know, Springfield Housing Authority. I have often dealt with the constituents for me, but the residents, you know, for housing on, on these issues and it gets a little complex. But I will say, our role when it comes here, I teach, you have to go to their, their board. They have a housing board. Their director works for a board. And that board sits that these directors from HUD and Policy and all kinds of things. And that's the, the effective way to make change. Now, the retaliation piece, and because this is often, this is not new. They complain about something, then they get retaliated again, then they get kicked out. And then somebody says, well, Alderman, why don't we just get rid of the building? Well, then we already looking at a population that's what?
Oh, I don't want to get rid of the building, Roy.
No, I, I know you don't, but I'm just saying that's what some would say. Well, if it's that bad and it's that, and, because I'll often get scared and say, if you complain enough, mind me of the other place with the elevator problem, they'll close you down. You know, they'll say, okay, you're right. It is bad over here and close you down. And then our, our homeless population and our unhoused people, I don't, you guys, I gotta say all the words to make everybody happy.
I, I get it, Roy.
But you know, we, 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 we try to deal with it, but I think what's effective is not just going to city council about everything. You have to go to these boards, these housing boards, these school boards, these SMTD boards. I mean, this is how we fix.
I'll be honest with you though, Roy, that's a tall order because quite frankly, I'm missing county right now. I mean, it, it, the problem is, is a lot of times we are redirected to these individual groups and quite frankly, they make it this difficult. Why do you think they hold their meeting directly counter to you guys and they only hold it once a month?
So the only thing I can tell you, our role is our mayor. Now, I know when we appoint and get involved with who's going to be the executive director of housing, that's, there's a role in there and the mayor plays a part of that role. But as council people, is, I mean, they come and they, and we hear them and we do try to help, but I'm just trying to do some teaching here that for some of these housing problems, I, I think they get away with, like you're saying. Like the county and all these other places, they hold their boards and no one comes to them because all they know is mayor and alderman. They don't, they got to understand and start educating themselves on where to take the particular problem too. I was glad to see the young lady. I think we did get the assistance done. And I've talked to her several times from my home because of course, she's my constituent and it's in my ward. But I hear you clearly. I just say to people all the time, the answer isn't always the horseshoe, especially in governing. And when in regulatory things, they're dealing, they're doing the whole HUD thing and S.H.A. thing. And a lot of times they tell me to back out. And, and they have every right to, you know, even though that's in my ward. If it ain't a CO violation, ain't much I can do, but do like she did, report the CO violation, you know? So I, I just had to, I was moved to say that because I was moved by her myself. And I almost was lost at what to, how to help her, what to do with her. I thought I was trying to help when I was trying to give a little extra piece to help in hand, but I was in a minority, as you see. We couldn't put extra money out there for other agencies to apply that do this kind of weird circumstances that fall through the cracks or, or whatever that we, where do you fit that kind of piece? But, but he, he did get it done. I did talk to her and, you know, I, I was appreciative that she came. Some, some I guess people come to us because they don't know where else to go. But it's an educational curve for a lot of these problems. Because I mean, I get it about bus stops, a certain school and in this case, a certain building that's in my ward, but it's really managed by Springfield Housing.
Right.
Not the city department where Alderman can have some influence over a city director. Because the way we're set up, like every other city, that municipality is limited. Because the way we're set up, like every other city, that municipality is limited. And I think, I looked up, where's our role come in? And it comes in at their director level when it's time to replace her or replace him, uh, with, or you know, appointing the director, the mayor's involved with that piece, but other than that.
So we appoint their director, but we have no say over their operations.
Their board has to say citizens run for their board and get appointed on their board and things like that. And that's many boards like that. But this is why sometimes it feels like, uh, the problem ain't getting fixed or resolved. Like you asked the question, housing, when are we going to do something about them?
Well, I mean, frankly, it seems like their board doesn't care though, Roy. I mean, they can't not be aware of the issue. I mean, this is longstanding, right?
Trust me, they're aware because you know.
So what are, I mean, but what are we pressuring them to do the change that? I mean, they're costing city resources, they're making you guys have to do extra work. And I, and I don't mean to be argumentative with you, Roy, I'm just asking like.
I mean, I, no, you're not being argued.
It's just the frustration though of it's almost like a lot of these places seem to rely on you guys to clean up their mess, but we don't have the ability to proactively do anything about them from creating these messes continually.
I, I think there's a valid point.
You know what I mean? It's, it's just frustrating and I'm sure it's frustrating for all of you in the horseshoe as well.
Okay. I think you may.
Thank you, Roy.
Yeah.
Brianna Day.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, okay, so I wasn't actually going to touch on this. I was going to skip over it, but I'm going to touch on it anyway because it seems like there's some people in the crowd that need to hear about it. So, um, Springfield had the worst white rage massacre. I know people over here know that, but I don't know if people over here know that. So I just wanted to reiterate, it was a white rage massacre. White people took their rage and they enacted it on the Badlands, which is our east side. Um, gosh, right before this happened, a branch of the KKK popped up at the University of Illinois. It is not a coincidence that the white rage fueled mob massacred black humans while destroying their hu, their homes and their businesses shortly after the KKK chapter was born. The KKK is a Protestant-led, Christian, white supremacist group. Please notice, oh, never mind. I had a picture in this post and I'm telling you to look at the picture that you can't see. Um, but in this picture, there are fraternities listed above all of the names of the KKK members. The reason being is because, um, the way that it worked, every fraternity would delegate one white man to be sent to the KKK. This made it possible for the KKK to have their hands in every single group, every group. Okay. Now that we got that out of the way and we got the KKK in Springfield and we're acknowledging it because they did try to say that they were not a part of the national group. However, whenever they got pushback on the fact that there was a KKK in and around Central Illinois, they decided to consolidate five nationally recognized chapters. That further proves that they were a national organization because they took five national organizations and made it into one. They then gave it a new name, Tumass, which, um, is cultural appropriation. We'll just call it that. Uh, at the same exact time that this happened in Illinois, it also happened in Wisconsin, further proving that it was a national thing. All right, so now that we're past that and we know that the KKK is here, let's go ahead and let's talk about the Chicago outfit. You guys like my outfit? I did not get it from Chicago. Um, so the reason why I'm mentioning the Chicago outfit, I've mentioned Madigan plenty of times. Um, they're, they called the Jewish mafia, the Kosher Capones. Uh, this was because like Polish, Italian and Irish mobs, um, they, they worked alongside the Jewish mafia. This is why you will see, um, gosh, it's why you'll see the name Shapiro whenever you're looking at Trump's cabinet. It's why you'll see, God, uh, for, let's, let's go ahead and we'll bring it to Illinois. Um, Lenny Patrick, he was the mobster up in Chicago that went off and pew-pewed some people. Uh, in case you were wondering, yes, some of their sentences are being commenced. I don't know what the right word is. Uh, yes, what she just said by, uh, Trump. Um, so during prohibition time in Illinois, specifically in Springfield, um, there was a grocery store that the Cohen family, uh, they changed it into a snack shop in order to cater to the Pillsbury Mill family. Um, they, gosh, the Italian, the Jewish, the mafia, I understand it's scary. But if I am one person and I am risking my family in order to talk about it, maybe we should wipe the smirk off of our face and talk about it.
Mayor Bill Cruzheim.
Should I start? I guess I have to start. I miss you guys. So I would like to start as usual with a moment of silence for Emma Schaefer, Sonia Massey and all the lives taken in Palestine, Syria, Yemen and Lebanon. A while back in December, while I was walking downtown, I saw a picture of Emma with a quote from Audre Lorde that said, "When I dare to be powerful, to use my strength in the service of my vision, then it becomes less and less important whether I'm afraid." Climate activist Greta Thunberg, who was on board a ship to deliver aid to Gaza to break the siege, kidnapped by Israel occupation, said, "Because the moment we stop trying, the moment we start trying is when we lose our humanity." And no matter how dangerous this mission is, it is nowhere near as dangerous as the silence of the entire world in the face of a live stream genocide. Fear silences us. Since I last spoke in between May 13th and now, about 2,000 people were reported killed by the Israel occupation in Gaza. Babies, children, mothers, fathers, families destroyed. As of May 28th, the Gaza Health Ministry reported at least 54,084 people, humans killed since October 7th, 2023. Fifty-four thousand and eighty-four Palestinian people and more counting. Amnesty International has independently concluded that Israel is committing a genocide in Gaza based on their research and analysis. How do we go on our daily lives as if nothing is happening? Why do we not empathize with the Palestinians? When I found out about the genocide of the indigenous peoples of America, the enslaved people of Africa, Nazi genocide of Jewish people, my head would spin and think, how could this even happen? How was that even possible? And now we're seeing the slaughter of all these families, these children, kids being amputated without anesthetics and being starved. Palestine is the issue of our time. Government physicians said, I quote, "Where you stand on that issue tells whether you even have a heart that is even open to functioning." There was this Jewish sage a hundred years before Jesus, his name was Hesel, who said, "The task is not yours to finish, the task of healing the world, but neither are you free not to take part in it," end quote. Racism is our national disease. Getting sick is not our fault, getting well is our responsibility. Which led me to invite you all to this free anti-racism training provided by the Springfield Immigrant Advocacy Network. I also sent you an email invite. It is not enough that we're not racist, we have to work to be anti-racist every day. People will say this is difficult, but it's not. The truth is, those of us who know, know that everything is connected. End stage capitalism, fascism, climate crisis, Gaza, Sudan, Congo, Trump, Musk, ICE, what is happening in LA and so on. It is all rooted in an equal, unequal distribution of wealth, greed, racism and power over the people. It takes all of us to create an equitable society. Start by showing up for your community. Come to the workshop, they don't bite you. I mean, they feed us, they'll feed you as well. Sign up, I mean, I signed up for the 21st, I hope to see you all there. On another note, Mamukaleo has been detained for approximately 90 days. Don't forget about him and don't forget about the others, people being detained by ICE. Immigrants are not your enemy. They are people like you and me, we bleed the same. Um, I want to wish everybody a happy Prime Month and Juneteenth. And, um, as always I said, wish you all so much love, freedom and liberation. Free Palestine, free Congo, free Sudan, free your minds. Thank you.
Kirk Kluge. Kirk Kluge. Rod, Robert Fraser. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Let's get moving, second for a German.
For a German.